Board of County Commissioners is now in recess. Next on the agenda is a public hearing, local planning agency. So we will adjourn the county commission and open up this meeting as the commission's acting as a local planning agency.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Mr. Chairman. This is a public hearing to discuss the St. George Island overlay district that's being proposed for the business district on St. George Island. Generally speaking, it is the area that's between the east boundary of Third Street East and the west boundary of Third Street West, going from Appalachia Cola Bay to the Gulf of Mexico. At this point, it would be appropriate for the board to receive public comment before we proceed with the public hearing, unless the board has any questions for me, of course. And if there are no questions, then we will proceed with public comment.
Any questions from the board for the attorney? We'll now ask public comment. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand, come to the podium. Come on up, Mason. State your name for the record.
Mason Bean, St. George Island. Thanks for letting me speak, and I appreciate the writing of this new overlay. I hate to give up our C2 zoning that has served us well for the last 65 years, but I do have some comments I would like to make. We did miss the last workshop we were out of the country. I apologize for that. In your overlay, the prohibited uses and structure, right off the bat, you've got commercial boat storage, the storage of boats and trailers, actually, it's items 11, 12, 13. I would like to see that either stricken, and if you can't strike it, at least move it to an accessory use or a special exception. In your statement of fact, you ask for the ability to promote St. George Island as a unique, attractive, vibrant, and economical prosperous community. I would just hate to see you handcuff our future growth. We are in support, continue, will support a marina at some point. This is the only place in all of St. George that there will ever be a marina, and we don't want to give that up. I hope for future economic reasons and just the support of a little water-dependent island. We need a marina and a safe place to harbor. Yes, please consider that. The other thing, in the building standards, it's item number three, roofs. You're saying gable roofs and flat roofs are allowed. Gable roofs shall be between a 12 and 12 or 45-degree angle. Also, the roof shall be constructed of either standing seam or dimensional shingles. I would just like to see that stricken totally. I hate to see the limited of a design. Let people design the structure of their needs. If you had a 45-foot building and a 12-12 roof pitch or a 45-degree angle, that roof is 25 feet tall now. Also, the insurance companies do not like gable roofs. They encourage hip roofs. There are discounts for hip roofs, so I'm not even seeing the need for that. But once again, our business, I just hope we don't restrict the opportunity for future growth. So I appreciate the ordinance and the rewrite, and thank you for letting me speak.
You're welcome. Ma'am, you're next. Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Daphne Evanoff, St. George Island, East Point. I agree with some of what Mason has said. What concerns me is the architect limiting what we possibly can do in the county overall, whether it be roofs or materials. I think we need to keep our minds open and let that go through the Building Department in reviewing on the elevation plans on building sites. Building material, so yeah, let's keep that open on the building, on the structures. I'll get back to the start. I do have an issue with prohibited use in structures. My grandmother's a gypsy fortune teller, and I do believe that she wants to do a fortune telling tattoo parlor, that that should be allowed. I don't know what a hookliver lounge is, so I have a problem with that. Fish camps have always been on the island. It's really what the island was started as. We need to keep that in mind. Communication towers are there, and progress may even change in the future. Let's not limit that. I presently have two commercial lots that are right next to the St. George Island water tank, the new one that was put in by Jean Brown. It presently is, towers over my structure by 12 feet. No, that's just the ground. That's how much fill he's increased. So I want to make sure that, and I see that is gone, but I'm glad you've allowed for the fill to go to the FEMA maps. Alleyways, they go sometimes all the way through all the properties, and sometimes they end. They end just beyond mine because beyond it is a wetland to the west. I have the East Point, I mean, the St. George Island tower has allowed a right-of-way, but at this time, I cannot really access the back of my property due to the, just that road never being put in or completed by the county. Jean Brown has modified that property for St. George Island water. So as far as where trash could go, when you have a 25-foot wide lot, having setbacks 20 feet from here to there, and then no access to the back, really kind of makes it unrealistic. I think we all want to have a nice-looking island. It's a matter of everyone being conscious and courteous to their neighbor and having a place that is appeasing. And the issues of sidewalks, who is to put the sidewalks in is a concern I have. There are sidewalks that go to the corner of West Second. They do not go from Second to Third, and it's on the opposite side, so who would put the, with the tank on the one side of me, vacant lots? If I open a business, do I have to cover the 50 feet in front of my property? I don't know. And there was even something here of reviewing present structures that are in that district. I know the Bubba's Beach Club gone to the, now just sort of a vacant building across from the shotguns. It's an eyesore. People have tried to do what they can. It needs money, but you have to be careful on how much money does one have to put into meet the standards? And I am actually for allowing, I don't know what happened with the RV issue that was rezoned and then resend it, and that seems like it was allowed for Walter Armstead's property for the RVs of 13 parcels or 13 parking spaces, and now it's saying that it's not, and I don't know how that happened. And so that makes me wonder, anything that's said in this commissioners or in this county can be taken away. And that concerns me. So unless due process is done correctly, I have a problem with the ordinance. Thank you for listening.
Yes, ma'am. Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may then go over with the board some of the additional language that is in this current version, the ordinance, and this has been pointed out. I'm not sure what page I need to look at on their iPads, Mike. Do y'all have the ordinance in front of you, commissioners?
I do.
All right. If you will go over to page, the bottom of page three, and moving over to the top of page four, there are new prohibited uses and structures that were discussed by the board, and I felt like I had direction from the board to add into this proposed ordinance regarding commercial boat storage, the storage of boats and boat trailers on unimproved land, the storage of boats on the ground and not on a road-ready boat trailer, and also prohibiting businesses which sell or rent inflatable bounce houses, inflatable combos, water slides, dry slides, obstacle courses, ball pits, those general inflatable toys and rides and gimmicks that the board was wanting to have prohibited in this overlay district. So the commercial boat storage specifically says that this prohibition includes, but is not necessarily limited to prohibiting commercial storage of a boat within an enclosed structure, commonly referred to as dry stack storage, and storage underneath an open structure with a roof. Then it goes on to define what commercial boat storage means. I have since come up with perhaps some alternate language. I'm playing around with now this in the version of this ordinance that I'm looking at. You don't have that alternate language, but it is generally for the purpose of making sure that we exclude, and I'm not picking on anybody, I'm just using a live example of what we have in the county, that Caravelle Boat Club over in Caravelle, where they built that huge dry stack storage, and then they turned it into a condominium, and they were actually selling all the dry stack storage spaces inside that building. So I'm working with language that addresses that concern, that type of development, and prohibits it on the island. It was my understanding, in addition to that, commercial boat storage, that the board as a whole did not want to allow people to store boats and/or boat trailers on unimproved property within the commercial district, so I have that as a prohibited use. And then also just making sure that people don't store boats on the ground as well. That's a separate prohibition. If you will flip over to page six, particularly as it relates to pedestrian walkways and sidewalks, I've got a placeholder there, question mark, based on the board's comments at the last meeting, that there were concerns expressed, pretty significant concerns expressed by at least two of the county commissioners concerning taking up and consuming buildable space on small lots by requiring the owners to build sidewalks, also a concern about water being displaced off of the lot and perhaps into the roadway. So my placeholder there is, does the board want to eliminate or keep the sidewalk provision? That's not a decision that you necessarily have to make today, but if y'all have any further guidance for me, then I would certainly want to take that into consideration as I come up with the final version of this ordinance. And then I added in an additional development standard on page six, and it states, again, going back to the boat storage, I believe there was a comment that there would be a maximum of two boats and two boat trailers allowed on improved property within the overlay district, which is just a different way of stating that if it's not improved property, then you can't store any boats or trailers on that property. So those are the principal changes since your first public hearing. Does the board have any questions or directions for me on those additional prohibitions and additional development standards as I've described them to you here this morning?
Real quick, my concern was with, I guess I was one of the commissioners you were referring to about the sidewalk issue, and, you know, whether we need to require sidewalks or not require sidewalks, and, you know, my problem was with people having to back across the sidewalks to get in and out of the parking, to the parking places of the different eateries and other places within that commercial district. I don't know if the rest of the board members share that concern, or should that be a concern? I mean, it was something I thought about. You know, sidewalks make it good for people to get around, but you also, you know, if you have sidewalks and pedestrians crossing, and people having to drive across the sidewalk to go in and park to go into a restaurant or whatever, then when you try to get back out, then you got to cross that sidewalk again. You know, if you look, if you look at, like Appalachia Cola here, they got sidewalks all around the city, but you don't have to necessarily, in most instances, drive across the sidewalk. You do have to access the bank up here to drive through, when there are certain places that you do, but for the norm, the sidewalks are here and the road is here, you know. So, and that was a concern of mine. I don't know if it's a concern for the rest of the commissioners or not. Any comments from the board members on that particular issue?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you about the sidewalks for reasons we stayed in the last meeting with safety and are the sizes of the lots to begin with. I mean, just me personally, I don't think the intent of what we're trying to do here is to try to recreate something like downtown Appalachia on St. George Island. It'd be nice to have, you know, sidewalks probably, but I just don't, I don't see us on that barrier island being able to accomplish that without having safety problems or water problems or, you know.
Commissioners, Commissioner Jones, if you remember, East Point is actually a better example, Commissioner, because if you remember, there were few businesses in East Point, once that sidewalk came in, they complained that sometime their customers are leaving, and I don't want to single anybody out, and people were walking across the sidewalk, it was close calls. And we checked with FDOT, if you remember, and the person on the sidewalk has a right-of-way.
Sidewalk has a right-of-way.
You know, if you're backing out, you happen not to see these individuals. That's a safety concern.
As we talked about that, I just wanted to bring that to you, if you remember that, you and I.
Yeah, that happened right there on 98, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because the business owner who's questioned that was like, man, what do I do about this? You know, these people about to run over somebody leaving my parking lot. Is there something the county can do to treat him for being there?
He wanted the county to put signs warning the pedestrians that it's active driveways, what he wanted, and FDOT's out.
It doesn't work like that.
No, it doesn't work like that.
If you provide pedestrian a place to walk, then that should be a safe place for them to walk.
Right. I think the bigger issue too, or just as big, would be the, when it's all said and done with the possibility of having a water problem.
Yeah, drainage problem.
I will say that.
You had somebody what? Any other commissioner comments on that particular issue? For or against, or should we do away with sidewalks, keep the sidewalks? What y'all want to do on that issue? Because the attorney's asking us what our opinion is.
It's going to be a public debate.
I think it'd be better for us to do away with it unless somebody has an objection to it, Commissioner, Chairman.
I mean, in a way, you know, it's something to someone to build, use Daphne's example, make her build a 50-foot sidewalk that doesn't lead anywhere, just puts a burden on her, doesn't create a pedestrian pathway, just makes her spend some money, and so I'm sort of feel like if you're not going to do a comprehensive sidewalk plan, then don't make individual people do it.
Well, you're just creating more impervious area there that, so, I mean, the water can't percolate. I mean, you're taking that option away, even though it's a sidewalk, but if you require it everywhere, then that adds up as a place that the water can't percolate right now. And I think, myself, I think the island personally doesn't need any sidewalks. I mean.
It's not a long distance in the traffic in the commercial area, sometimes it's so congested, you can't go very fast anyway.
I know we have one long bike paths, quote sidewalk.
Right, and that's the main traffic. We got people off that now, so, yeah.
And you have to be careful when you're leaving.
Right.
There'll be businesses on the beachfront coming across that with people walking in bicycles, but I mean, I understand the need for it, but I don't see the need to expand on that.
Well, and also, without trying to confuse issues, at some point, it'll be back to a place where people actually were driving golf carts anyway, so.
Could be. I'd like to add.
It's okay.
It is the roof issue. I would just go and strike the roof issue. I agree with what Mason said. I forgot about the gable end issue and the hip roofs. It doesn't prohibit hip roofs, but I would say let the building code discern it. I mean, there's not a roof style on St. George Island now that's predominant, and everybody's got everything, so I would just say take the roof issue out, unless the attorney, David Therac, had a reason to put it in there.
Well, no, I'm the one that's drafted this. But before we move to a different subject matter, so the directions from the board to me are eliminate the sidewalk, that's what I'm reading.
I think that's what I'm hearing. I think that's the best thing for us to do on that issue.
Yeah, and Allen is, well, our most recent planner, but he's been with the county a long time, and if he's okay with removing, you know, any type of restriction on the roof, I'm not wedded to that idea by any stretch. It's just, there's a checklist of items that you can go through in creating these ordinances, and roof styles is just one of those items on checklist.
Mason was right, that you do get an insurance break when you do the hip roof, because it doesn't allow the wind to get under it.
Thank you, Allen. That was just after safety, Mason.
All right, so I'm sensing from the board, the collective decision is to eliminate any restriction on the roof style, whether it's hip or gable or flat. And revisiting an issue that we talked about previously is, are there any of these development standards that the board wants to impose presently for everyone that's in that business district now? Or are there some grandfathering exceptions you want to make, both on the development standards? Frankly, I understand that, for example, we were looking at, when we've eliminated the sidewalks, we were looking at the outdoor storage of materials and goods for a business, and the screening and shielding of garbage cans that, there's still an issue on the board that I need direction from as to whether you want some, all, or none of these development standards to go into effect presently. You do have that discretion if you want to say, well, these provisions I want to go into effect now. As an example, the screening of garbage cans and the enclosure of outdoor goods from a business, or you just say as new businesses come in, then, in other words, everyone would be grandfathered, now the new business starts, and then these new development standards would apply to them. I think when David Therac was here, he had suggested to you that some of these items you may want to go ahead and implement presently, for example, screening of the trash containers and things of that nature. Don't know if you're all ready to make that, you know, a decision on that right now, or give me guidance on that, but it is still an outstanding issue that needs, you know, we're going to need some direction on in drafting this ordinance. But other than that, that's all that I have for the board on this version of the ordinance, and I'll just inform you that you will be making, having another public hearing on February the 20th, and that will be a decision-making, public hearing to decide whether to adopt the ordinance or not adopt the ordinance in its final form.
That one will do the vote.
Yes, sir. But if there are no official comments or questions for me, then I would recommend that we, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I was going to ask some more questions if I can.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. The, I would also like to, not that it'll mean anything while we're doing it, for due diligence, I would like to see if you can get in touch with, oh, my goodness, Mr. Eric?
Yes.
To ask about the deal with the plants, just a person, I mean, it's not that big a deal, but we're doing it, so it's just due diligence. And just to confirm where we're at, I, in my mind, that what we're trying to do here is not try to put an undue burden on the businesses that are already in the island. We're trying to protect, preserve, and give some guidance to that business district going forward, so to have some kind of plan, because it's never, never had that. And in reference to screening, don't it, the ones I can think about are things that might need screening. I can think of at least one area, it's like an outdoor, it serves basically as an outdoor storage facility in the business district. The whole property does have a chain link fence around it, but everything is visible in there. If we're going to screen something, I would be more apt to screen than that, as I would opposed to every individual trash can. I mean, that's me personally. And for some of the grandfathering issues we've talked about, just to make sure that I'm understanding what we're talking about. Far as grandfathering businesses from where they are, I just don't want to be the language, I don't want the language to be in such a way, Attorney Shuler, that if I already owned a business there, and we pass this ordinance, and two years later, this business is failing, now I'm prevented from opening another kind of business at that same site, as opposed to, I just want to make sure what we're talking about. Whether we're grandfathering in only what's there, or we're grandfathering in the site and the business owner, and I'm not trying to make it more confusing, but I want to make sure we know what we're doing. Or if we're talking about, it's going, everybody that's there is there, and everything going forward is going to be this way. That's some of the things I still don't really see spelled out. And it might just be me, it might be there plain in front of my face, but those are some of the questions I have about it.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll make sure to address that.
And as well, I don't, and I discussed with you last time after the meeting, I did make a statement about true C4. I thought about that afterwards, I'm like, you know, but you know what? I haven't done it any other time, so that's what I said, and that's how I still feel about it. Whether the rest of the board does or not, that's the way it's going to be for, on my stance, anyway.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Michael, on these stored materials seized on other outdoor sales areas, mechanical equipment, and waste containers located on the ground, shall be enclosed on all sides at ground level by a fence or wall constructed of similar materials as a primary structure. Now, is that to say that a garbage container, when it's picked up by the truck and dumped, you want to enclose that, but then there'll be a gate in the front that'll open to let the truck go in and pick that up and dump it? Is that what I'm assuming here? In other words, it doesn't have a roof on it?
If there's a, if I know what you're referring to, you mean like one of those big commercial dumps like you get from, do we have those on there?
Like at Harry Age.
I don't, there might be a couple of places that have one that big.
I think Harry Age has one behind their place.
That might need clarification.
Anything other than, you know, the standard, like 95-gallon garbage cans.
Not in the business district. I think there are some that are bigger.
I can address that.
The county's got theirs, put a fence, a wooden fence around it. We got a wooden fence around ours.
Yeah, but there's no roof on it.
With two doors, almost swing open to pick it up.
That's the next point. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? On this particular item?
Are they going to have to be built to a certain standard to, some of them can look ugly too, according to how you built them.
That's what we're discussing, Commissioner.
They're supposed to look like the building that's there, so like, some kind of standard there. Any other comments from the board? This meeting of the local planning agency is closed. Board of County Commissioners has now reconvened. Is there any public comment on the ordinance? Any further public comment on the ordinance?
Got a lead up there.
Come forward, state your name for the record.
I really do think we do need some, allow and be open to storage for boats on the island, all right, especially if, in that area. I just do want to make that clear as my position. There needs to be a place for people to, unlike that property I presently own, I just counted in my mind, I just drove by, there's two kayaks, there's two wave runners, there's an offshore boat, a bay boat, and a little river boat. That's where we live. Take your pick. So we do the two boats per, I don't think that's suitable. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Commissioner comment on the ordinance? There be enough commissioner comment?
I have nothing further for the board.
This concludes the public hearing of the county commissioners. Next agenda item, Mr. Michael Marone, county coordinator, report.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My first item is Ms. Deborah Belcher, UCDBG administrator here today, seeking board action for the following two items. A copy of her full report is included in your package. She's here to address you just on these two items. If we have any questions on her full report, let me know, and I'll get her to respond back to the board. Ms. Belcher?
Um, we received one bid for the, um, mobile home rehabilitation for Donnie Nichols, five seventy-one Wilderness Road, and, uh, that dollar amount, um, there was one alt, where a couple of alternates, but that's the, the final recommended, um, amount, four thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. And then, so what you would be doing, it's not a contract with the county, but you're approving the funding to the owner for this, as well as the doc stamps and recording fee for the mortgage loan.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Debbie, when did Mr. and Ms. Jackson get added to this list?
Uh, I put those on the recommended list, uh, for now, because we, um, we had some other elderly, the board's priority is elderly and disabled and mobile homes. And so, um, we had, um, some that were interested, and then decided they were not interested because they didn't want to deal with the deferred payment loan. So, in order, I, you know, I could, we, we also have been eliminating applicants as we go based on the budget, because most of them needed to be replaced. Uh, most of their homes needed to be replaced instead of rehabilitated. So, I'm like, okay, I gotta, you know, come up with, uh, some homeowners who are either elderly or disabled, live in a mobile home that's feasible for rehab for our last, you know, jobs. They are income-eligible, um, their home is, um, not in real bad shape, but it does have items that need to be addressed.
But when was, when were they added? Because the last time you were here, the only item you had that got added was, uh, Mr. Donnie Nichols.
Yes.
When they added white paper.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm, I'm recommending to you today, and they're items two.
Add that one to there?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Do, do, you, do you need two separate motions for this?
Yes, there are two separate items.
So moved.
A motion for the bid award, that's item A.
Say, there are a motion by Commissioner Lockley, a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries?
The second item is adding, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Jackson to the, to the list, is that what we're doing?
Yes.
So moved, then I, let me ask you a question before I do this. This, this gonna be a rehabilitation, not, not a?
Yes.
Correct, correct. Their home is very feasible for rehabilitation. They need things like, uh, air conditioning and heat pumps replacement, um, you know, some things like that, a little bit remodeling in the bathroom, so at their age, like he's seventy-eight, and getting, climbing into a footed tub is not gonna be feasible much longer. Things like that, there are a few things, a, a deck is shot, that kind of stuff.
You're going with Centraia?
Yes, they have ductwork already, and, uh, what they have now is an, uh, a gas furnace and a, and a, uh, air conditioner, but it's like, it's a ninety-four mobile homes, and it's original, so, and it's failing now.
It'd be cheaper with a liquid.
Well, heat pumped is prob, is what I'm recommending at this stage.
That's what you're talking about doing.
Mr. Chairman, imagine, of course. Debbie, after this, after Mr. and Ms. Jackson, how much money is left?
I, I can't tell you becau, because I don't know the bid, but I, in my mind, um, um, I have the figure of somewhere ten thousand, maybe a little more.
We need to close this out.
I know.
So we can get to another one.
We need to close this out, so we can get another one, we got people out there sneaking.
So this is the, this is, that's what I'm saying, this will, this will get most of our money spent. Um, I have, I have one, I have something we can spend on Pam Bathis's house also, if we have leftover money, she needs it in range, and she didn't tell me about that till afterwards, and so, um, a couple of items like that, but yes. That, and this one's ready to go. I've got, I've done the environmental, ready to submit to DEO tomorrow. But this is number ten, we have to do ten. And so, the Jacksons will give us number ten, ready to go.
Do we have a motion, the second motion?
Motion to approve, uh, for Mr. and Ms. Jackson. I'll do it, I'll say it.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? A motion carries also.
Thank you.
I'll move on. Alan's office will read the rest of my report, so we can be out of here in ten minutes, but I, I don't know. Okay, Weems update. Um, as of Friday the second, the balance in the operating account was a hundred and thirty thousand, and the balance in the money market account is five oh two eight twenty-five. However, Weems requested a hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer from their money market account to the operating account yesterday. Included, I'm sorry.
Well, let, let be known, they didn't borrow that money, they, they.
It was a transfer. Their savings to their operating, yes, sir. Uh, if we can move on. Included in your packet is a financial report presented in a Weems board of directors meeting held on Thursday, January twenty-fifth. At this same meeting, Mr. Ben Bass of the county's auditing firm presented a review of the hospital's audit. There are other documents presented at the meeting, included but not limited to the twenty eighteen disaster plan, the twenty eighteen hurricane plan revisions, and the twenty eighteen organizational plan. I've included all these documents in a newly created folder in your Dropbox account, which appears in your tablets. If you have any questions regarding this information, let me know. I have the appropriate Weems staff member contact you. At your November twenty-first, seven, twenty-seventeen meeting, the board motion to terminate management agreement with Tallahassee Memorial Hospital within ninety days. That effective date is approaching. But since that motion was made, Mr. Jim Coleman resigned from CHC, Community Hospital Corporation. Attorney Shuler and I have met with TMH's CEO, Capital Regional CEO, and Sacred Heart Ford St. Joe, their chairman and president, to discuss their interest in Weems. These talks are ongoing. Because of this, I recommend a six-month extension of the TMH management contract, which would allow staff and opportunity to gather additional information to provide the board for further discussions and direction. Board, action.
Uh, I want to comment on some stuff before we vote and take a vote. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Uh, on your discussion with the, um, uh, Capital Regional, uh, CEO, that is Mark Robinson, am I right?
Yes.
Okay.
And there was another gentleman, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
With Sacred Heart. Um, in any of these discussions, uh, was it brought to anybody's attention what they would do if they would have a contract with Franklin County about the ambulance service?
Uh, and Attorney Shuler will jump in when I, if I miss anything. Capital, just Capital Regional and Sacred Heart, you want me to go to TMH with, because they're meeting with Mr. Mark O'Brien?
Okay, but I want, what I want specifically is, how do they foresee the ambulance service with the operations of the hospital? That's what I'm saying. Are they willing to take it over, or are they not willing to take it over?
I would tell you this, Capital Regional and Sacred Heart, they do not manage, uh, ambulance services. And so, one said they have to think about it maybe, and the other of St. Joe's like, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, Sacred Heart was like, uh-uh, we don't, we don't do that.
They don't do ambulances. Okay. This is my concern, because we've always had it consolidated into one with the ambulance service operating at the hospital. While we're looking at these hospital situations, we really need to be looking at the ambulance situation too. Because if it had not been for our ambulance service and some good people yesterday, it, it was already bad and tragic on two instances that we had happen in this county. In both ends of the county, they had to be in both ends of the county at about the same time. So, so, I mean, we gotta look out for these EMS people. And I want, I'm gonna make a motion on this particular thing, Mr. Chairman. And this is about the ambulance. I want, uh, Michael, you to look into, uh, ambulance service and what the surrounding counties do. I know there is some of the surrounding counties that run the ambulance service, the EMS services, through their sheriff's office. I know it's a lot of other things. But we gotta look out for these folks, because these folks are looking out for us. And so, I just want to make sure of that, because I, I'm concerned with, you know, we're, we're proceeding on with the hospital stuff, but we're leaving the, one of the parts of the bath, you know, the baby out there with the bath water, so I don't want to throw them out the door.
And, and it's not, in our discussions, we do, we ask, that's why our question, so what do you guys do about the ambulance service? You know, and that's how I know how to respond to you.
So, so what I would like for you to do, I'm gonna put it in the form of a motion that, that we direct staff to look into what the other counties in the area does with our ambulance service, and also to contact Sheriff A.J. Smith, and see if he would be willing to take over the ambulance, if we have to, to look at that situation. And, and, because he is familiar with that, he's worked in Okaloosa County and all those other counties, he's familiar with it, and we gotta look out for this, because I can, I tell you what, I can't say enough about him. And, and we're losing people left and right. So, we need to look into that, but I make that as a motion.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, a second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have something, if I may. I, I, I know from, and I don't have, claim to have extensive knowledge, I know from a little bit of research I've done on this issue, there's probably less than five in the state of Florida that still do hospital-based EMS, and we're one of them. And I, I just thought it'd be another thing to throw out there when we're talking about it.
I'm glad you, you said that, Commissioner, because I, I'm under, I'm not feeling good.
Well, we got to have that ambulance.
We do have a motion and second on the floor, any other discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Now, getting back to the action that he's asked the board to do for the extension of TMH, please, the board?
Can I talk on that?
I have a question.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, Mr. Lockley has a point.
I want to know, on that, yeah, is there, I need a answer on the question. Can't, I ain't got no problem, I can have some. I, I'm willing to get them six months. But can we do this, get them six months? And at the same time, they bring payroll back in one, at him? I, I want one payroll, to the, the top two, three people getting paid from Tallahassee, working for Tallahassee. The CEO, CFO, I think she's there. They get paid out of Tallahassee, but what I'm saying is, we, we can have a contract with Tallahassee, but them people, I want, they take to come out the same car for everybody else who get, work at the hospital again. They, I mean, they'll be working for Franklin, not.
I, I've never seen a contract, Commissioner, that, so.
They'll be working for, at him, they won't be working for Tallahassee.
Okay, so are you asking us, I'm, I'm sorry, just want to be clear. You're asking that the CEO, CFO, and director of nursing, if they're paid through the TMH contract, you're saying you want them now part of the leasing company that we pay the other employees?
That's right. That's what everybody else. Everybody else out there is on the leasing. What, they make the big book, what they getting owed is they could benefit from. And came around the hospital.
I think that's part of TMH's management thing, they're in it.
It is. That's what we negotiate, the contract.
That's what I'm talking about, when we, we negotiate, we just tell them we want payroll, we get it.
I oppose to it, Commissioner, I just don't know how many fronts we can battle on at one time.
Uh, Commissioner Mathi has a question?
I got, I got a question. I think we need to have a workshop with the three little commissioners, we got, I meant the, uh, board members we got at the hospital, we short three or four, and find out who's actually in charge of telling, uh, CFO and the, uh, Mr. CFO and, um, Cooper, what to do, because we tell him one thing, they tell him one thing, and who's in charge of it, you know what I'm saying?
The board is actually supposed to be overseeing.
Well, who does the hiring and who does the firing?
Now, he does that.
You have, whoever does, we need to have a meeting with them and fill our other three slots we got out there at the hospital. And I'd like to put him under a time and emotion report to turn into Michael, where he's, what he does in during the week. You know, to have a meeting with him.
Oh, are we talking about Mr. Cooper?
Mr. Cooper. And see where he's at in during the week and what's going on.
Like activity log, a continued report?
Activity log, time and motion report. Where he's at during the week, you know, we'll meet with the, uh, hospital board and see, have a workshop.
Well, we're in a, Mr. Chairman, we're in a dilemma here, because I don't have, I'm like Mr. Noah. And I'm gonna go on out and say this, because I always do anyway, I don't hold back. Um, I don't have a problem with continuing TMH's contract, but I have no confidence in Mr. Cooper. Let's just get it out there. I don't know how the other board members feel about it. I don't have no, I don't have no confidence in Mr. Cooper. But I do have confidence in TMH. And we can, you know, I don't know how we're gonna rectify that problem. But, and, and TMH needs to know that we, that, I know I'm, I don't think I'm the only one that.
You're not.
But, but, huh?
You're not.
I mean, there's other people out there that can do this, and he can take, and that would knock that off right there, Mr. Noah, right there, on the CEO, if you take that out. But, but I want somewhere in the line, if we go and, and continue something, I want them to basically know that there is a couple of commissioners, at least, that don't have any confidence in Mr. Cooper. And I'm concerned with it.
I think that's been related. That's been related.
You, you think so?
I think so.
Yeah.
But, but the problem with, you know, if we're gonna extend this contract, it has to be extended the way it is.
I know.
We can't go and renegotiate and, and, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Lockley.
I can ask them.
Well, you can, I think he, I can, I think he could tell, or, or let, uh, Mr. Mark O'Brien know that there is some confidence that's been lost here on this board for Mr. Cooper. And, and, and I, you know, let him deal with it the way he's got to deal with it, but.
But we need to, we need to, as we're looking at all these different entities and negotiate with all these different entities, we basically gotta stay status quo until we make up our mind what we're gonna do.
Well, see, my thing is this, this man get paid big bucks. And he just ain't, he ain't showing no initiative where he, he trying, I mean, for that kind of money, I'd be.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, we need to have a workshop with the commission, where we can have our side, we tell him one thing, they tell him one thing. We need to, who's in charge of it?
I don't, I ain't trying to work against him or nothing, but he's working against himself.
Who's in charge?
Yeah, like he don't care.
And I think that's the reason why, and I'm not speaking from Commissioner Mathi, but I think that's one of the reasons why Commissioner Mathi is saying that he's wanting Mr. Cooper to report to. Mr. Morone, is because we don't know what he does.
He has nobody to report to.
He has nobody to report to, apparently. Unless it's Mark O'Brien and TMH.
That's it, I'd like to know, I'd like to sit down with the hospital board and work out something, see who, actually what's going on.
But, gentlemen, we haven't got a hospital board.
That's what we got three, we got the field, the other. We gotta fill the other one, three of them shows up and one's on the phone, the ones on the phone don't count.
That's correct.
So, we don't have a, a whole board there when they do it. You only got three, they do one by phone. And we haven't met with the board but one time since I've been here.
Well.
With the board itself.
We need to address the issue that is on our agenda, and come back to these other issues. We're, we're getting way off base here. Does the board want to extend, pleasure the board, whether he want to extend his contract until we get to a point and place where we can do something different?
Can we go, can we go three months? Let's do six months. Can we go three months?
For his pleasure, we just come back in three months, compared where we are.
Let's get real, guys, I'm not gonna be here but six or seven months, so.
Well, it's gonna take at least six months.
You know, I'm retiring, so.
I'll put it out there, I've talked with the lawyers, it's gonna take at least six months for us to get stretched out where we need to be and find out what's going on. We do, we're gonna come back in three months and do this again. We just toss some things back and forth out of the basket. Just go ahead and do the six months, give Michael time, because it stresses Michael out trying to figure out for three months and three months.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mathi to extend this for six months, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
I got some concerns, uh, discussion. Thank you, Mr. Mathi, I like you being a servant. I like that.
Thank you.
Well, um, I didn't want to, but I got to go a long way to keep the hospital open, but. Cooper need to tighten up, that's all I got to say.
Well, I think we need to convey that to Mark O'Brien there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, maybe this will kind of wrap us up and get us on to another spot. Some of these same issues are the issues I had in mind when I said some months ago. Some of these same issues are the issues I had in mind when I said some months ago that the problem with this board running that hospital is all the information we're being given is history. It's not current what's going on. Uh, that's why, I mean, I, I work for a gentleman, he sees reports every day the business is open. He might not see them the same day, but he sees them the next day. And he tells me what reports he wants to see, and I give them to him because I already have them. So anyway, and I, I do have to wrap this up and get on to another thing, there is some, uh, some information I asked for this week from the hospital about the EMS, uh, maintenance logs. And I'll have Michael give you all those, you know, get them to you after, I didn't get it done before the meeting, but he'll make them available to you guys, so y'all have it as well. But this, that's just basic reporting stuff, and that's most of what we're talking about.
We do have a motion to second on the floor. All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And continuing, it's kind of down Commissioner Mathi's idea. I've included a copy of the current makeup of Williams Board of Directors, uh, including their term renewal dates. There were at least three instances in 2017 where regular meetings were canceled due to a lack of form. I would ask that the board consider filling the vacancies and replacing or renewing the seats with expired terms. This can be done at our next meeting, through that impact. Uh, item E, Mr. Cooper informed me that he has submitted a grant application for new ambulance. If this grant application is approved, the county, I put Williams in parentheses, will be responsible for matching a mod, amount of approximately $20,000.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
You guys remember, you know, that's how we got the last one.
Usually the, they're supposed to come and ask the county commission, he didn't, but I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approved this, that we need a new ambulance, and that the money come out of the capital outlet money.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mathi, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, your last meeting, I formed a board at F W C had approximately $488,000 for another derelict vessel removal program. If all went as planned, the bids for these vessels should have been opened earlier this meeting, which they were. As a reminder, one of the vessels is a shrimp boat that sunk on the west bank of the Apalachicola River, which places it in Gulf County waters. So Mark Currenton, working with Mr. Don Butler, Gulf County's administrator, got the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners to approve a memorandum of agreement authorizing Franklin County to remove the vessel. Board action to authorize the chairman's signature and the M O A contingent under attorney's review of that document.
Same way, sir.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? The motion carries.
In addition to the M O A with Gulf County, board actions needed for the chairman's signature on a resolution authorizing Franklin County to apply for, for Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission grant funding to remove these derelict vessels. If any state agency, we gotta do a resolution.
Same way.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
County staff has received a complaint that the property owner at 1818 East Gulf Beach Drive has a shed, a deck, and dock that has not been permitted by your building and permitting department. Board action to authorize Attorney Schuler to work with staff, which he needs to get the information, and contact the property owner in an attempt to rectify these violations.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders, any further discussion?
Discussion. Commissioner first. Does, does this action of the board include me taking enforcement action in court if need be? Or do you want me to come back to the board to get further authorization to go to court if I have to go to court?
You cannot allow people of the county to go through and just bill whatever they want to without coming to the building department.
Do what you need to do.
Do what you gotta do, if he, if he don't wanna act right.
Checking the limits of my authority.
If he don't wanna act right, do what you gotta do.
Now, I, I just want to make a, a comment while we're here, because this has been a pretty recurring theme, I know I've only been doing this for a year. But I, I would think it'd be a whole lot cheaper for the county to have a code enforcement officer to do these actions than have to take legal action.
Come on, boo.
Just a passing, passing notation.
You ready to do it?
I've been talking about it for a year.
We have to, we don't know what the money coming out.
A bunch of time is coming up and saying.
We need to come back to that issue.
We really do need to do it, though.
You gotta grease the wheel to keep it going.
Okay.
Well, make a motion, uh, find out how much want to cost.
We had a motion already, it turned out, Mr. Antler.
Uh, I, I mean, after the, the one.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I wanna make a motion to see how much a whole and coastal whole package costs.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, item number seven, uh, Mr. Mark Currenton and Mr. Warren Emo, after months of emails and discussions, have a solution to replace the Armory's front door. Mr. Emo is proposing to remove the existing historic pocket doors and engage a craftsman to reconfigure the doors while maintaining the unique features and arches of the historic doors. I should have recorded all this. He will also construct a new door jamb, exterior wall assembly, to replace the existing aluminum storefront entrance. Historical requirements for the door design and unique features at the door opening are addressed, as well as addressing the egress requirements by the state fire marshal. Tool cost of the project is $22,135, which is $6,799 more than the remaining $15,366 left in the grant, grant balance. If the board authorizes this project, the county will be responsible for the $6,799 balance, which could be paid from the repair and maintenance budget. Board action to approve this project and then authorize the chairman's signature on change order two, which is this project.
Okay, with those terms.
Yes.
Same way.
Second, with discussion, he must have got some gold on him though.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Discussion. Uh, real quick, I'll just make a brief comment before we move on, we're running real late here. Uh, the original estimate was $40,000 to replace that door. And I had a real strong meeting with the architect and suggested he find ways to, to do a better job at, at a lot less cost. So now it's down to $22,000, that's a lot less than 40. Uh, we need to move forward with, with that and, and comply with all the state preservation criteria and the fire marshal.
You say real strong, I say blunt.
You talking about putting more in his pocket than he supposed to, so.
Anyway, we do have a motion to second on the floor, all those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Number eight, at your January 16 regular meeting, bids were open for the construction of the sidewalk on North and South Bayshore Drive. M of Tallahassee Incorporated was the low bidder at $391,805.70, which was $32,973.70 higher than the amount allowed in the grant for construction. F D O T informed Mr. Currenton that they have reviewed M of Tallahassee's bid and will provide the additional funds needed for the project. I need board action to authorize the chairman's signature on the F D O T supplemental agreement authorizing the additional funds, a resolution authorizing the project, and a notice of award to M of Tallahassee. Trying to wrap everything up in one motion.
Pleasure the board.
Motion? That can be one motion.
Yes, I, if you, uh, if your attorney doesn't object.
I made that motion.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
At your December 19 regular meeting, the board authorized me to purchase a new vehicle for the administrative office in a series of vehicle transfers to the billing of the official department and the maintenance department, then sending a vehicle to auction. Staff is able to purchase a vehicle from the Sheriff's, uh, Association's bid list, so we can send the truck currently assigned to the maintenance department to auction, which would help offset the cost of the new vehicle. And the inmates you heard this morning move in that equipment, all that's gonna be done is one big auction package, and I'll, I'll, I'll bring that back to the board, I'm sure the public is interested to know when that's gonna happen.
Pleasure the board.
Motion to send it to auction.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mathi, any further discussion?
Is that, is that truck any good?
Yes, that, that was the truck I told you, we changed the computer like twice, and it, some days it starts like a charm, and he can drive to go somewhere and it won't start. So we gotta get something to bring it back and, you know.
Seven electrical issues.
Yeah, I don't, it's 2009, if I'm not mistaken, plus probably. Yeah, yeah, man, yeah, yeah, and it's, it's just too old to keep investing, keep putting a new computer all the time.
Are y'all talking about a cold import, or you gonna need something to drive?
Well, it won't be that truck, you get stuck somewhere, you get in trouble.
We do have a motion to second on the floor, all those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10, Ms. Lori Swizer, your ship program administrator, is requesting board authorization to release fiscal year 2016, 17, $60,000 from the disaster funds program. These funds are held and reserved to assist homeowners that qualify with roof repairs in the event of a tornado or other natural disaster. These funds will be dispersed in emergency repair and home rehabilitation programs. The disaster fund program will be funded with $60,000 from fiscal year 2017, 18, ship money, uh, the county, the county recently received.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Mathi, discussion. Now, Michael, you're saying money's that the county recently received?
We, we, we got the, we got the disbursement from the state for this year's ship money.
Okay, and we're already spending that, the money that we normally set aside for emergency repairs?
No, what, that's what she's asking.
This is for last year.
It's last year.
But we now have the $60,000 from this year also set aside?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly, because you can't, we just can't leave 17, 16, 17 money sitting there, they'll take it back, basically.
I understand. Pleasure the board, we do. Yeah, we had a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The Northwest Florida Water Management District has notified the county of the public hearing date for additional additions or modifications to the five-year land acquisition work plan. This public hearing will be held on February 8th at 1:10 a central time at Emerald Coast Utilities Authority in Pensacola, Florida. A copy of the letter listing the proposed modifications to the 2018 plan is included in your packet. And I'm gonna have to email you, I think there's a change to this date, I'll have to look at my email today and see if I can send it to y'all in case anybody was planning on attending that meeting, if you are, but it kind of conflicts with your legislative days. Um, so I, you know, so I'll let you know. Uh, we did 12 already. Item 13, from the board, I've received the invitation for the Camp Gordon Johnson Days reunion parade, which will be held on Saturday, March 10th, beginning at 10:45 a.m. And the parade lineup, of course, you guys know, starts at 10, at 9:45 a.m. I'll complete the parade entry form and coordinate with Pam for your transportation. Uh, informed the board that the Guardian and Lighter Program hosted orientation sessions on Friday, January 26th at 12 noon, and another one at 5:30 p.m. that same day. Based on the volunteers that attended, there will be two training sessions here in the commission room on Saturday, this is coming Saturday, February 10th, and the other on the 24th. Uh, they, they got some good volunteers, so they have that, it's easier to, with the volunteers, easier to train them on a Saturday than it is during the week for them. I have one more quick item. I just need a board, we, we did this in 2016. Uh, the Title VI Non-Discrimination Policy and Resolution for LAP, uh, I just, we have to update with a new chairman's signature, the resolution and the, um, and the policy. It's every three years, but since we have new chairman, they prefer we do it right now if we could, because it helps with all the LAP programs that we have, so if I get a, a motion to authorize a resolution and a policy of plan.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That ends my report. I'm longer than Alan, I'm sorry about that.
Next on the agenda is county attorney's report.
Uh, two action items for the board's consideration. Um, I should have done this while Howard was here earlier on the, the legal documents, the lease agreement and the repurchase agreement for the two dump trucks. But I have strict instructions to read certain things into the record, so I will beg the commissioner's, uh, indulgence. Let's see, first, as initially discussed during budget process for this current year and approved by the board on January 2nd, the road department will be trading in one 2003 Mack dump truck, last for the VIN 5234, to pay the one-year lease payment on two new dump trucks. There will be a rolling lease agreement with Capital Truck, whereas the two trucks valued at $295,000 will be owned by Franklin County for 13 months. At the end of the period, the trucks will be bought back by Capital Truck before a second payment is due on the lease. At that point, the rolling lease agreement will be in effect. Every 13 months, Franklin County will be trading out for two new dump trucks. This arrangement is already in place in several neighboring counties with good reviews of the program. A formal lease agreement, excuse me, a formal lease purchase agreement with financing company leasing to Incorporated must be executed each time, along with a resolution authorizing the signature of the chairman. The resolution is as follows. Uh, resolution, Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, at a duly called meeting of the governing body of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners held on the 6th day of February 2018, the following resolution was introduced and adopted, resolved. Whereas the governing body of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners has determined that a true and very real need exists for the acquisition of the equipment described in the lease purchase agreement presented to this meeting, and has further determined that the equipment will be used solely for essential governmental functions and not for private business use. Whereas the governing body of Franklin County Board of County Commissioners has taken the necessary steps, including any legal binding requirements under applicable law to arrange for the acquisition of such equipment. Be it resolved by the governing body of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners that the terms of said lease purchase agreement and escrow agreement are in the best interest of the county for the acquisition of such equipment, and the governing body of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners designates and confirms the following persons to execute and deliver and to witness or attest prospectively leasing to Incorporated lease purchase agreement and escrow agreement, if applicable, and any related documents necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by the lease purchase agreement and escrow agreement, and that person would be, uh, the, the chairman, Joseph Parish. Uh, the repurchase agreement is a one-page letter agreement that comes from Capital Truck, uh, and it lays out terms that, essentially, it's, it's just an adhesion contract, there's really not any negotiating. It's just like when you go buy a vehicle anywhere, you either accept the terms or you don't. A number of municipalities, or, or, excuse me, governmental agencies, I'm told, have been using this, this form of a purchase agreement. Like Howard's looked into it, Howard seemed satisfied with this process. And there's, uh, also an exit strategy each year, if you should elect to, uh, not fund, then essentially you turn the, the trucks and the equipment back over to the company and you move on to something else. So, thank you for your indulgence, and with, with, unless there are no questions for me, I would request the, uh, the board, uh, by motion, adopt the resolution and authorize the chairman's signature on the, the lease purchase agreement and the repurchase agreement by Capital Truck Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Mathi. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Do they lead cause to?
I do not know the answer to that. I, I came in at the, the tail end after all the agreements were put in place, I was just presenting the documents to look at, so.
We do have a motion to second on the floor.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Uh huh.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Final item, uh, we'll go much quicker. Uh, recently, the board was faced with a, a development application concerning, uh, another RV park over on Island Drive. Part of the process that they were trying to go through procedurally in, in having you review that application was a, a planned unit development, a P U D. Uh, I wanted to bring to the board's attention that it's the collective wisdom of myself and Mr. Pierce that although in the late 1980s, the county did adopt a P U D ordinance, which essentially creates the framework for the board to review applications to determine whether you want to authorize a, a PUD development or not. Uh, at that time, we were also a critical area of state concern. Our development ordinances and zoning regulations at that time did not become effective unless and until they were subsequently approved by the state of Florida following adoption by the board. Uh, there is no evidence that we can find that, that the state has ever approved that P U D ordinance. We therefore think it is, is not a valid ordinance, however, it still sits on the books and creates confusion. Uh, so my request is that the board authorize me to conduct the public hearing so that you then can make a decision whether to officially revoke and rescind that P U D ordinance.
So make a motion. We have a motion on, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Lockley, second by Commissioner Mathi.
Yeah, just very, 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 I completely agree with what Mr. Schuer said. This ordinance is on the books, and we were not, we're long as we're airproof, except, sir, we weren't allowed to use it because the governor cabinet didn't think it was a, an ordinance that had proper structure to it for some reason. I now, 20 years later, forget what the reason was. But it's, it's confusing to developers and to staff to have it on the books, but yet then I tell people, oh, we're not going by that ordinance. So we, we need to get rid of it, and I'll be honest, in hindsight, the Frank Kage's P U D experience has been, uh, less than 50/50. We've adopted several of them, Biosite's Cut is a big perfect example, spent many, many years trying to get Biosite's Cut P U D on, and guess what, it all turned to residential. We've had other projects that get turned to residential. So P U D is really, I mean, they can work, uh, in rural areas, but they're really designed for urban areas. And I'd say 30 years from now, after 30 years, we haven't had a great success, so let's take it off the books, and if we ever need it, we can start fresh with something that's pertinent to Franklin County.
So let's take it off the books and if we ever need it, we can start fresh with something that's pertinent to Franklin County.
Mr. Chairman, uh, and back in those days in the 90s, uh, in the 80s and 90s, you also had the development of regional impact, and that's what St. James Bay is, development of regional impact. So, I mean, to me, the PUD ordinance doesn't have any creep about itself. And, uh, and now you don't have that because we don't have DCA anymore, Department of Community Affairs. But, uh, anyway, I agree, we need to take it off.
So we have a motion and a second, if there's no further discussion, any questions for me?
We do have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And I, I was going through my list a while ago, there was actually a third item, uh, very quickly, this, this, not necessarily time that you would have to ordinarily appoint your member and your alternate member to the canvassing board at the supervisor of the elections office, however, the canvassing board workshop is coming up in April and the, if, if, if anyone wants to attend that workshop, then I would just respectfully suggest that the board think about appointing a member and an alternate in case they want to attend that workshop and receive the necessary training. We'll have time for staff to, uh, book a room and get them registered for that, that conference in April.
Where is that?
Uh, the.
Orlando.
Yeah, the, the Florida Hotel or something.
Florida Mall.
Florida Mall.
Well, uh, didn't, ain't no more than that?
I, I believe yours.
'Cause you got two.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm retiring, so I'm not gonna be there, and Smokey can't do it, so you or Ricky or William.
I suppose Tim will, right?
Yeah.
You need to, right, you can't because you're, you're in a race, you're typically the chairman, the chairman doesn't need. But in this case, uh, if Commissioner Lockley's the, the primary, then you would just need to appoint an alternate.
We need a motion.
Yeah, uh, I'm gonna tell you this, I know you, we're probably, uh, the motion to have Mr. Noah be our primary and Ricky Jones to be our alternate, how about that?
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey.
I can make it 'cause I'm not having to run.
That'll be one more day, no more.
Any more, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All, all opposed, motion carries.
I have nothing further for the board.
Next on the agenda would be, uh, commissioner comment?
I've got something. Uh, this is something that not everybody knows about and I'm gonna bring it to some people's atten- to some people's attention. Uh, for, for many years, we have had the activities outdoors, outdoor activities of hunting and fishing and all those good things. In the past few years, you know, we're in the Northwest Zone as far as thought of fish and wildlife is concerned. And we're in the Northwest Zone, which gives us two weeks in the middle of January to continue our hunting. We have the first four days of Thanksgiving, then you have 11 days to ban, and then you have, and then it lets us back up. Well, what this does is it creates a problem for the Central and South Florida hunters who are already done with their hunting by the middle of January. So what they do is they, they come in into our area in the last two weeks of hunting. And this year I have never seen a bunch of, I, I've met some good ones, but there's a lot of them that just come in there and think they can just take over in somebody's area, not mine, in somebody's area that's hunted there for a long time. And it's causing a lot of conflict, hunter conflict, which I am not for hunter conflict. But I'm not for anybody pushing you off where you've hunted all your life too. So I would like, if this board doesn't mind, I would like to work with Michael Morone and us contact the Division of Forestry and Fish and Wildlife Commission and see if there's something that we can work on to try to eliminate the hunting, um, pressure that's in here.
Open up at all at one time, let it stop.
In other words, instead of them closing it up at Thanksgiving, just run it on through for the Northwest Zone and let us finish at the second week in January and then all the hunting in the state of Florida under General Gun, General Gun is what I'm talking about, underneath General Gun, close it up all at one time and then we won't have this conflict coming into the area. Now, and I, I don't know if this can be done, 'cause I've tried to do it before in the past in the 90s, and I didn't have, um, uh, enough to, to get it done. But I'm, I'm quite certain that I, you know, I've got contacts, I can make that, but, but I know if any of y'all have any of the hunters in your area, you know what I'm talking about. And so what I'm trying to do is I'm not trying to be, let it be unfair, let it go back to what it was prior to the 1990s. When it went, it opened up at Thanksgiving and ran all the way through, and then we closed up the, like, the second week in January or whatever. Um, but this is something that's important, I don't want to see our local hunters in trouble. I don't want their, their traditional lands to be, uh, um, just throwed off of it. I mean, yeah, we know we don't own it, we know it's public land and all, public land, dollars buy public land for public use, we all about that. But at the same time, show a little bit, what have I been talking about all day? Show a little bit of respect. And so if, the board would allow me to get with Michael Morone, and we may have to even talk to Michael Schuler with it too, on the legal side of it. And let's see if we can't do something, and I'm gonna, we need to start this thing that we closed down the hunt out at one time in the state of Florida.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Massey, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries, any further commissioner comment? There being no commissioner comment, meeting adjourned.